Yeah, there you go.
Oh, good thanks.
We're not there to grab one until we forgot.
Hey, somebody.
I'm sure you all kept them away from me.
What's that?
He kept the agenda away from me.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the Shenandoah City Council meeting for June 28, 2023. See that everyone's present? We do have a quorum. We're going to stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an invocation.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the people, Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
The invocation is going to be delivered by Dr. Jim Wallace.
Let us pray. Sovereign God, we thank you for our leaders, for their commitment, their hard work, their sacrifice, and their love for this city. We've been discussing money tonight, and God, money always brings a myriad of emotions. But your word says that where our treasure is, there's our heart. And I pray that the hearts of your people will be reflected by our leaders and the decisions they make about money. And I pray that that will be reflected in decisions that are made for spending tonight and for the long-term budget like we've been discussing. I thank you for your blessings on this city, financial, safety, provisions for our kids. I pray you'd keep us on the right path. And I pray this. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We're going to move on to Citizens Forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters relating to city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand up and approach the podium to address council and give their names before sharing their comments. The first speaker we have is Jean Teague.
Good evening, council staff. My name is Jean Teague. I live in the Valley. I'm here to comment on the emergency meeting notice that was posted at approximately 1:30 today and with the code that says, section under 551045, exception to general rule, notice of emergency meeting or emergency addition to the agenda. When I go to the code, I'm going to read you just a portion of it. It's not the entirety, but you can find it under the Texas Government Code. It says number two, I'm sorry, yes, number two. An agenda item listed on a notice of the meeting before the supplemental notice was posted is an emergency or an urgent public necessity exists only if immediate action is required of a governmental body because of, one, an imminent threat to public health and safety, including a threat described below, or, two, a reasonably unforeseeable situation, including fire, flood, earthquake, hurricane, tornado, wind, rain, snowstorm, power failure, transportation failure, interruption of communication facilities, epidemic, riot, civil disturbance, enemy attack, or other actual or threatened act of lawlessness or violence. It goes on to say, "The governmental body shall clearly identify the emergency or urgent public necessity in the notice or supplemental notice under this section." The only thing that is listed is personnel. So is this an emergency? Does it affect all personnel? And is this an emergency that warrants an executive session? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Teague. Next speaker is Jan O'Houston.
My name is Jan O'Houston. I live in the Valley. Thank you, council, mayor, staff, and distinguished guests. Tonight, I want to speak to you guys regarding diabetes, peripheral neuropathy, and amputation. And I'm going to analogize that to crime, to the sequelae of crime and the effects that occur. So when people have diabetes, many of you may have relatives, and what happens is, high blood sugar actually damages nerves, sometimes even kills nerves, to the point where at your hands and your feet, that damage, you can no longer feel, you're no longer sensitive to injury to your periphery. So diabetics will wear shoes often that are poor fitting. They will begin to get blisters, and where you and I could feel that, we would have the sensitivity to understand there's pain or there's some damage there. They do not. And so they begin to develop these blisters that turn into sores. They open up, bacteria, clostridia specifically, can have spores that then will germinate, and they will produce gangrene. When you get to a certain point, the only cure for this diabetic symptom or this diabetic result is amputation. And so I'm going to show you, as you can see, it doesn't go from zero to six. There are six grades, zero, one, two, three, four, five on here. It actually goes from zero to one to two to three, et cetera. At the end is amputation, and that's actually not even shown on here. And what I would like to analogize is that crime, we're not going to stop it, just like we often don't stop diabetes in the patient. But diabetic patients don't have to lose their limbs if we catch it early enough. And so what I'm asking you, we have talked about crime before, Councilman Pollard. We've talked about Stay Safe Shenandoah. I know that you had comments at the last meeting. And with respect, after you made your comments, with respect, the very evening, we had, with not being a jerk, but we had penises and breasts and swastikas at the park. We're, Shenandoah doesn't draw swastikas. We're not going to put up with it. So we need to go, and we need to look at the crime. And I kind of put this crime, like from speeding tickets to suspicious person to catalytic converter thefts, to narcotics, prostitution, sex trafficking, robbery assault. I left murder off because murder would be analogous to amputation. What I'm asking you is to consider that we are in the midst of this, and we need to treat our crime. And I'll just, and Councilman Fletcher, I didn't want to take away from my time, but I wanted to thank you for your motion. And MDD, thank you for the repairing of the splash pad and your motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Charlie Ballmer.
Good evening, mayor, council. Charlie Ballmer, 214 Hickory Ridge. I won't be extensive. I actually wasn't even going to talk tonight. However, I saw a fantastic share from Councilman Pollard today on Facebook that accentuated the fantastic job that our convention and Visitors Board Bureau is doing around the city of Shenandoah. They highlighted some of the, for folks that are coming to attend concerts at the Cynthia Woods Mitchell Pavilion and the accommodations that we have locally here, as well as for the one particular hotel, the ability to have that shuttle that takes them right to the event. I just want to give you a virtual pat on the back, and your entire team, it is fantastic work you're doing. Anybody that's on the internet is probably seeing the Stay Dine advertisements that we have running for Shenandoah. I think they're just doing absolutely fantastic job, and I just wanted to give them a little commendation for that tonight. So thank you very much, Don and team.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item number six. Presentation of a final report regarding a variance allowing for encroachment of pool equipment within the side building setback at 115 Alien Ridge.
Mayor and council, the property owner at 115 Alien Ridge has requested a variance based on the layout of the home and the access to have a pool, to be able to place the pool equipment within a four-foot side setback line along the west property line of the home. The home is located in the Lily neighborhood, and the HOA is reviewing the pool documents as well. Planning and zoning reviewed this and does recommend approval of the variance for the pool equipment within the four-foot side yard.
All right. We're going to move on to a public hearing on this issue, item number seven, regarding a variance allowing for encroachment of pool equipment within the side building setback at 115 Alien Ridge. We're going to open up the public hearing at 7:19. Does anyone want to speak on this item? No one wants to speak on this item, we're going to close the public hearing at 7:20 PM. Moving on to item number eight, discussion of possible action to adopt the following ordinance. In ordinance of the city of Shenandoah, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102, to approve a variance to the city of Shenandoah zoning ordinance, providing for encroachment of pool equipment into a side building setback line for 115 Alien Ridge, Shenandoah, Texas, providing for a penalty in the amount of $2,000 for violations thereof, providing severability, and providing for an effective date. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion to move by Councilman Bratt, seconded by Councilman Pollard.
So what's the status on the HOA?
They're waiting, they're pending our approval, yes. They're waiting on our final documentation. Correct. And then they'll issue their approval documents.
Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I thought usually we had more detailed drawings in this, like the pool location and the equipment location, and I really don't see that in the pack. Can we make sure that we have those in the future?
Absolutely.
That's all.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, presentation of a final report regarding a variance for Adriatic Cafe to the northern building setback line for 2.203 acres of land, by deed, recorded on the county clerk's file number 2007-132782 of the official public records, Montgomery County, Texas.
Mayor and council, the current construction for the Adriatic Cafe, that property owner's requested a reduction in the building setback for encroachment within the patio and the outdoor coolers of the building. The property was prior granted, a lot frontage reduction variance and a variance to the landscape buffer along the north property line as well. This request for the 10-foot build line coincides with the 10-foot granted variance for the landscape buffer. Planning and zoning did review this and recommends approval of the reduction to the building setback along the north property line.
Thank you. On this item, we're going to move on to a public hearing on this item regarding the variance for Adriatic Cafe to the northern building setback line for 2.203 acres of land. We're going to open up the public hearing at 7:22. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? No one is present to speak on this item. We're going to close the public hearing at 7:22. Item number 11, in ordinance of the city of Shenandoah, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102, to approve a variance to reduce the side building setback for 2.203 acre tract of land, recorded on the county clerk's file number 2007-132782, official public records of Montgomery County, providing for penalty in the amount of $2,000 for variations or violations thereof, providing severability and providing for an effective date. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Fletcher. Any discussion?
What was the hardship that was presented to P and Z?
Oh, I'm sorry, the narrow, the narrowness of the lot, it's got already, there was a, I believe it's only 178 feet wide, in order to maintain one entrance along the south of the building and then have enough parking along the south as well to maintain the desired drive distance along the south. So then you've got parking one drive distance and in the building.
So we've already given them their vegetation, and this just coincides with the same line?
Correct.
Did they get a shared entrance deal worked out?
I do believe that they are getting an access into the San Moon.
I knew we talked about it, even though that's been finalized. But they're still going to have a primary feeder road entrance?
They'll have one.
Okay. And P and Z didn't, you said P and Z didn't have any problem with this?
Uh-uh.
And the tenant north of them is a commercial property as well?
Correct. Outside the city limits, though, this is, would be the state of the line, yes.
And there aren't any residential neighbors that would be affected whatsoever?
You know what the projected opening date of that restaurant is?
I don't. Bernard, do you happen to know what their anticipation?
We're expecting to open that, probably in December.
December?
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? We're going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Great. All right, item number 12, discussion of possible action regarding the final plot of Adriatic Cafe, a subdivision of 2.203 acres out of the William McDermott survey, A-389, Montgomery County, Texas.
Mayor and council, this is the plot for the property just discussed for the construction of the Adriatic Cafe. The plot in the agenda pack does show the prior approved building setback to coincide with the vegetation setback along the north property line, and planning and zoning also recommends approval of the final plot for Adriatic Cafe.
Great. Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Fletcher, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number 13, discussion regarding the 2023-2024 budget.
Mayor and council, you were part of the joint meeting. In this agenda item, we will discuss the MDD budget update, general questions about the budget, and then the individual budgets of administration, finance, community outreach, non-department, municipal court, community development, and trash management cycling. So from the MDD, just an update for anyone who's just joined us. MDD opted to fund nine projects, all within their scope of revenue, so there is excess revenue, so there could be mid-year adds for projects. They will approve their budget at the next meeting. And they, there was one project that was pulled from the CIP and added as a budget amendment to the MDD, and that's the splash pad improvement, so that will start sooner than October. So is there any general questions about the budget or anything budget-related? It could also be MDD.
MDD questions?
We can do that as well. It's budget discussion, yeah. No questions?
Not MDD, so.
Okay. No, we could do, yeah, we can move on to point B.
Now I want to step into the other ones.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay.
You can step into point B, no problem.
Admin, the postage is up, but does that take into consideration aspirations to do more mailings?
Yes, so that is to add some additional communication, resident communication mailers. There's also, I believe, the print remain the same, it was just the, because they're, those came in under budget, so it was more focused on the postage.
And then, this is going to be a recurring one that happens almost in every section that we do, but can you address the parts that are no longer being used in the 2023-24 budget year? I'm looking at page 12 of the PDA.
Page 12?
It's like, there's, it's been removed, I think it's got something to do with cap projects, or I don't know, but.
You're talking about page 12 in the PDF that was posted online?
Yeah, it was, it was showing that in 2021-22 that we had 80,000 in it, and.
There was a land purchase at that point.
Okay.
So what I do is, because if I put every GL that was ever used, these charts would be astronomically long, going that far back. So what we do is, we put activity and additional GL accounts no longer used, and then we just put that amount so that it matches with the audit report, so, you know, the balances match up, so no one's like, it shows a true comparison.
Did anybody else have anything in admin they wanted to talk about before I move to finance?
And I apologize about the comparison sheets, those have some print issues. So some of them are in black and white, some are, and some of them are weirdly spaced, but I will have final copies for you, but this was just for the discussion.
It's too fresh for me, I got to go with what I got.
Sorry. So yes, that is the admin department. There wasn't a huge increase, well, the only increase was the salary wages because of the administrative assistant position that was added mid-year that finally hit the budget overall this year. And then I just want to note, on each cover sheet in the budget, I did a category spend in summary, and what that does is that it shows, it breaks it down into the main categories that we have for accounting, so personnel, contractual services, operating supplies, other operating services, and in government transfers.
I was just going to give you those accolades, and you stole it from me.
No worries.
Yes, I really like the fact that you've added those summaries in there and the department objectives. I think that that's a really important thing to add as well.
Yes, that was a new thing that we did. We were trying to develop a strategic plan for budgeting. It's the best way to budget. So that will be, at the end of the budget cycle, when we approve it, that draft of that will be presented to you as well, once we true up costs. But on those category summary, spend summaries, you know, I break it into those different categories, show the difference and the percentage change for that category, and then it also shows you what percentage of that overall department's budget is part of that category. And as you'll see, as you go through the budget report, most of it's personnel. The only two departments that are personnel, that have personnel that aren't personnel-heavy with the expenditures is going to be Public Works and Water Sewer, because they have a ton of contracts within that department as well, technology as well.
The only other thing that I had under finance was under the travel and training. Do you need a little more for that? Would it help to send some of your part-time folks to training as well?
So we have the additional training in there. It does say additional training, finance director, but that's kind of more of just a catch-all. Last year, I was not able to go to some train-ins, so Lacey did go to Tyler Connect, so I did delegate that to her. We're pretty good with our train-up and train-in. The only reason that it was in 21-22, a little bit higher, is because GFOA had their national conference in Austin, so it was a higher registration than usual, but it's the national one, so I have to fly anywhere I went.
Is there some, on the training on that one, we've got a new hire in your department? Is there some additional training you'd like to, you'd like to have them attend, specifically to, I know they've got a background, but specifically in city finance and?
So I have 2,000 in for her, and what she'll probably do this year is go to TML, they do an accounting academy. I will have, I'll probably be sending her there, just so that, because she, she did accounting, but then the, at the tail end of where she came from, she was doing more budget, so it's a good refresher course for her and also for some things that she probably needs to learn as well.
Is there some of the tailor, some of the software training, or is that just going to be more on the, on the job?
It's on the job, yeah. Tyler Connect, when it is local, we typically, it doesn't really benefit me and Kristen to go as much, because we're not really in processes, like Jackie, Chris, Lacey, Tammy, they're in actual processes, so it's really beneficial for them. We just do more financial work. So, and when she left Tom Ball, she was in inflammation with Questica as well, so she has that back around as well, so we will, yeah. So the academy will probably be the best for her, and then we'll see where we go after that, after her first email, kind of figure out.
I think rest of council, if you find you need more, more for travel and training, you can always come back and ask us.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, so in finance, nothing really changed that much, obviously salaries and wages because of step increases. The audit, the audit contract did come in because we went out for bid, so those prices went up a little bit. But, and we were able to decrease some of the AP items because we do mostly now electronic payments to reduce postage, print supplies, Micker Inc. So we're finally getting into the 21st century on that one. So that's all the finances. Any other questions on finance, or, okay?
I had a couple for community development.
Let's do community outreach.
Community outreach.
Yeah. So community outreach is basically the civic club department. So Debbie, I met with Debbie and the volunteers with the civic club, and then Raul, me and Mark also met with them to discuss some of their objectives with their events. So there was money added to the budget for more entertainment, and there's also three events that were at it, the Halloween event, Montgomery County Safety Expo, and national, oh, not national, I apologize. Maybe there's only two, probably only two, sorry, got ahead of myself. That was not added to the budget. It's going to be a special consideration item when we get into budget time, so we can kind of scope it out. I didn't want to put it into the budget with just a dollar amount, until we kind of figure out what we want to get.
What are you talking about?
The 50th anniversary event, that was not added into the civic club budget. It'll be a special consideration item when we get into budget, because it won't be technically an operating item, because it's only a one-time thing, so we'll talk about it as if it's a kind of like a capital purchase at that point, kind of how we used to treat swim or NCA events. So, so Ron, your questions on community outreach?
Yeah, there's a personnel cost line. I was wondering if maybe, if any of Debbie's time needs to be allocated there, or no?
It's all general fun.
It's all general fun.
Yeah, so.
Okay. And then, and then we have the, it sounds like repairs on the angels, and are we going to be outsourcing that, or?
Civic Club has, Secretary Charlie Ballmer had made a great recommendation to Raul and Mark after, when we talked to Civic Club about the intensity of those repairs, and it was to maybe reach out to lifeguards that are back for the holidays that would look for some extra money. Okay. So we don't have to pay overtime costs for our guys out in the field, because how Joseph does now, the guys, October 1, they start coming in early, and it's every day, and it's a lot on them, a lot of overtime, so overtime costs. Lifeguards don't get that overtime factor or the retirement or factor as well. So as we get, you know, getting closer to October, Public Works and Civic Club will organize how they're going to handle that, but that was a recommendation at that point.
And we're going to publicize that recruitment for, for people who come in, is that correct?
I believe so.
For the lifeguards?
I'll defer to him.
We, we've got the lifeguards, you know, we can reach out directly to our lifeguards.
Then we also talk. Then we also talk...
embedded, trained, and all the, all the other stuff.
We'll see if they can stick to it, the stuff.
So, the idea was to take, I believe it was, Raul, correct me if I'm wrong, two or three angels, and totally, yes?
Yeah, so we usually repair two of them every year, so we're looking, making a, making it three, four this upcoming year.
Okay.
So, since we're on community outreach, so, just as a, the add Kona Ice Truck, we had one this year, at the Patriotic, it was called Patriotic Parade, is that a different event, what event's that, of the Independence Event?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's another thing I was going to bring up.
So, yeah, it's, we keep calling it that, and that's not what we're doing, but we're saying we're going to add a Kona Ice Truck, but we had one this year, right? So, is that different, we're adding a second?
We had excess in the budget, some other event items, so she added, used some of the excess to put towards.
I got you, so that wasn't budgeted, it was, we had.
I believe so, and I can double-check that, I'll confirm it, and I'll email you guys.
I was just curious, everybody loves a Kona Ice Truck, but just checking on that. What do you think the attendance was this year?
I think it was down due to the heat.
Well, that's, you know, we're talking about...
It was good, but it was brisk.
I mean, it was, it was nice, it was, you know, it was a nice event, so we're talking about doubling the budget for it.
I'd say about 300.
There's no way to, there's no way to really take attendance, I'll just...
Oh, I just, I guess.
Estimated about 300.
I brought eight. Just my family.
Unfortunately, or fortunately, we did have the Sharks participating in a huge event at the same time, and that took away a lot of people, we had a lot of comments about that, I wish it didn't conflict, because a lot of people wanted to be there because of that. The heat was just awful, I talked to people, I think that we're getting close to heat stroke, seriously bad, but hopefully get a break from the weather next year.
Any other questions for community outreach?
No, just, just name, try to keep consistent naming descriptions, take Halloween event, but you call it, in the budget, you call it a fall, and...
Yeah, and that's just, so Kristen was doing these comp sheets for me, so she was operating as I was getting budget done, so, these are just internal comp sheets, these aren't what the GLs show.
Well, I understand.
It would be helpful across the board.
Well, I had to create the GLs.
I kind of was pointing that out because of the, the parade, yeah.
She was working on these while I was updating and coding, getting all those GLs made, and so, but we kind of had it all earmarked for her, so, okay. For non-department, so this department is subject to change, I'm going to let you know right now. A lot of this is based on preliminary estimates at this time, with the TML IRP insurance, as well as our health insurance for employees, so, this is, this is most likely going to change, so I'm not going to, also, yeah.
Just for these departments, these, that we've got here, the personnel expenses have gone up somewhere between 16 and 20 percent, and supplies are running about the same, somewhere off 15 percent.
Yeah.
So, and that's all by inflation, by everything, you know, everything else.
Yeah, so TML IRP, I was talking to our member service manager, they are, the pool was hit very hard recently, there's been a lot of more, with the, with the influx of residents, there's been a lot more claims, especially with auto, auto's been very much hit within the pool, so, you know, we have a good record, so that helps us, but also we can't control their multiplier that goes across the board. We do get a little bit of discount when we're, when we keep our claims low, but it's just an overall increase.
And I know you've plugged in 5 percent potential income, or for the retirement, and what have you, you know?
Uh, yeah, for the, the group insurance and the dental.
Yeah, the group insurance, right.
Yeah.
That's good you do that, I mean, it's...
We like to try, try and catch everything to propose.
Still, I'm concerned about, overall, as we progress through this, with expenses jumping 20 percent every year, tax rate doesn't, you know, so...
So, once, the, TML IRP is hoping to get me finalized numbers by mid-July, and that's usually when we get our insurance rates as well, so as soon as I get that, this will be updated to reflect all that, with the actual true costs. Anything else for non-department?
No.
Okay. So, the next department's going to be court, which had no change, so, Jackie does good.
Check.
So, the next department will be community outreach, I mean, not community outreach, now you got me saying it, community development, and that's also Jackie's department.
Yeah, I've got, I've got something on this one, it's travel and training, this department is repeatedly way under budget, I want to recommend this be put down to $5,000, because it's not being prioritized as something that we need to be spending on.
No, I, I was actually going to suggest that there's money budgeted for travel and training, and part of the reason council does that is because travel and training, or training specifically, is super important. I think to have a good staff, we need to have a trained staff, and I would like to have our staff start taking advantage of some of this, whether it's Buckley School or something similar, if we need Tyler Connect training, I don't know that, you know, your staff needs that, but I think continuing to get our staff trained is, is really important, and having some of that, even that higher level training, personally, I feel like is really beneficial, and helps our staff, and so, I would like to see it, I know, year after year, we budget, and it doesn't actually get spent, so I would encourage you to actually take advantage of that, and, and yourself, and rest of your staff.
Yeah, I kind of believe in the, you know, if you're not using it, you lose it, so we've had repeatedly numbers that have been coming in to $3,300, so...
Or zero-line budget, so it's not a use it or lose it, we start out with zero.
Well, I'm just saying, you keep, but you, but you keep on not prioritizing it where they're spent.
Well, if they're not, if they're not utilizing it, then, I mean, that's, that's what they're requesting in their budget, is a zero-line item, so, while we're talking about training, Bill, I have a question for you, I know in the private sector, when we spend a lot of money to train staff, obviously, we're vested a lot with staff, so a lot of times, we end up having a contract with our staff, that if they left us and went somewhere else, and we've allocated all these funds that they've utilized to better their careers, they would either have to pay those funds back at that point, because they didn't stay with us long enough for the investment that we made, is that something even feasible that we could look at?
There are at least two other cities that I know that do that.
I'm just thinking of retention after we make an investment.
Right, and of the two cities that I know that do that, one's Tom Ball, in talking with them on another matter, the problem is, they send a letter when the employee leaves early, and says you owe us $1,500 back, or whatever, it's never been, for Tom Ball, economical to pursue it.
And collect.
And, and try to collect.
But if they did have PTO time, or vacation time, or something of that nature that was still within the city, they could collect the debt, couldn't they?
No, there's certain regulations, we would not be able to deduct PTO, for sure. There are other things that we might be able to, but not PTO. But Tom Ball still does it, and they send letters out to employees that leave early.
That alternative would be FLOSA, FLOSA violation, would it be fair labor standards?
Correct. Yeah, I can't, we can't withhold a salary or something for that.
Well, the, the alternative is when we have well-trained staff, we, I mean, it's, it's the double-edged sword, once we get them well-trained, we're going to have to compensate them more, and, you know...
Yes.
Well, not the idea is, I mean, we get, they're trained and doing a good job, and so then, yeah, we do compensate them more, because they're making more of a contribution, that's the whole intent.
If I may speak, on the travel and training, the, the gear shown on this, we've had some turnover in the department, which has made restrictions for traveling difficult, let's say, we all know Stacy left, Abby's sitting at the front by herself, it's difficult to schedule for training, so I, I do foresee training in the future for these positions, in fact, our building officials at training this week, it's a week-long training in Dallas that he's at, and so, our fire marshal in the past has been able to obtain his training through a membership he's had, at a reduced rate that hit a different line item, so, I, I do see where the concern is, but I would hate to see our travel and training reduced.
Well, I'm not saying to reduce it, I'm saying to be sure we're utilizing all of it, and, and in fact, if, you know, I'm noticing the two that got cut was, was Buckley and then, yeah, the Connect, but be sure we're using all that, so we're not, we're not cutting it, because I think that's super important, particularly for a front-facing department like you, I mean, you're, you're one of the ones that keeps Shenandoah moving and growing and building, and, and it's, it's very helpful, and I understand, we've had, we had the COVID, and we had, like you said, your new staff, you really couldn't, you couldn't have any, leave that desk empty, but just, I think council in general wants to see our staff well-trained.
Understood. And also, I pulled up the GL account, and so Jackie does, it's in encumbered for right now, so it's not showing up as a spent to year-to-date, but she's attended the Buckley School this year, so that will hit as well, so that will add to that 3,000, and then when Kevin gets back, his travel and training will...
What will that bump us up to then?
Um, Buckley School, should be probably about 8,000 when Kevin gets back, with all those expenses, for the year spent.
Buckley alone is four.
Huh?
Buckley alone, the rest is...
Yeah, so, we're at 33, add four, 73, and then Kevin's is probably about 1,000, 2,000.
It's getting better?
Yeah.
Well, here's a, here's a webinar for, from TML on succession planning for cities, and it's just an hour-long webinar, that'd be ideal for several of the employees to look at that.
Yeah, me and Jackie have done a couple webinars for the GFOA together, so we don't have to pay one membership fee, but it hits my budget.
I just got the email today, and I go, that's something.
And I'll tell you the same thing, at least, and I'll probably tell every department head, if you find training that you need to go to, that's, that costs some money, obviously, if that's something that needs to come back to council, we can, but council's going to support that, and so, you know, talk to the city administrator, and if they want to bring it to council, but I'm sure it's going to be supported soon.
Yeah, I would just say prioritize it more. The only other thing that I had was under the code remediation, the force maintenance, 2,000, where did that used to live?
It used to live in PD, when PD was over code enforcement.
Very good, okay.
And that's usually an in-and-out, so usually we reclaim it with a lien filing.
Yes.
So, there's a revenue source in the general fund, it's just to have it there, so that that line item is active. And then the last is going to be trash, so, you know, the, we did the increases appropriately to the house count, as well as the increase rate, because it goes up every year, I believe 5 percent, Joseph, or is that what the rate goes up every year?
Yes, that sounds right, I'm, I'm on the calculator, yeah, it's 5 percent.
I believe it's about 5 percent. Last year, we did have an excess in the trash fund, so we were able to reduce the transfer over, this year, we do not, because we used it up, so that's why that number, that revenue source that comes from the general operating is, is more this year, but pretty much, this fund is just a, it's basically another enterprise fund, trash services, so recycling is paid by users, but trash is covered by the city. And that's about it for tonight, so I won't bore you anymore.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
But, let us move on to item number 14, discussion of possible action to adopt the following ordinance, in ordinance of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, approving an annual service plan update to the service and assessment plan, and assessment role for public improvements, for the Metro Park Public Improvements District, and enacting other provisions remaining thereto.
Mayor and council, this agenda item is a yearly one that we have to do per law. The PID was created in 2017, it's the Public Improvement District with the Sam Moon Group on the Metro Park, which is located over here on the east side of 45, the Service and Assessment Plan, the SAP, is basically the plan that shows the approved improvements, and also the assessment role that will be paid back towards the debt, towards the loans for that project. The, the PID bonds are totally covered by the special assessments put on those different lots that are indicated within the SAP agreement, the city has never out any money on those repayments, and so, this is just to certify those roles, it's kind of the same idea as when we approve our tax rate, we have to approve an ordinance to send to the tax assessor, and then they put them on the tax rolls to collect on behalf of us, so this is pretty, and it gives you an update on the improvement status, and other items like that as well, which, we're pretty much almost done, there's a few tie-ins to David Memorial that will have to be done, once that extends, and then there is excess money in the project account, which the Sam Moon Group has expressed that they want to amend the SAP eventually, to then enhance some other projects over there, that would be beneficial to the city as well.
That would require our approval?
Yeah, so we would have to amend the SAP, they have to get me a budget and a project scope, so, once they get that, we, we've already had a couple meetings with them and their engineers to talk about it, it's just a little bit slow-moving, because they are working on some other stuff, so this will be, yes, so, that's pretty much what this item is just approving.
Motion to adopt a...
Second.
Ordinance as stated.
We have motion to adopt the ordinance as stated by Councilman Brott, we have a second?
Yes, second.
Seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any additional discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 15, discussion of possible action to adopt the minutes of the May 10, 2023 regular meeting, and the May 17 special meeting.
Motion, we adopt the minutes and approve them as read?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes as, as said by Councilman Brott, seconded by Councilman Cloud. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 16, motion, discussion of possible action to ratify the accounts payable for May 2023. We have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Fletcher, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, item 17, civic club updates.
Good evening again, Mayor and council, so, I'll start with our most recent event that happened last weekend, it was our independent celebration, we had several hundred people out there that, despite the heat, came out and enjoyed the celebration that was there. For those of you that were able to attend from council, absolutely appreciated you being there, and contributing to the time that was spent helping serve and entertain our, our residents, it was, all the, all the things that we had were phenomenal, with the special edition of the water slide seemed to be a huge hit, of course, Kona Ice was going through the whole entire time, as well as all the food that was prepared, and I can't thank all the other volunteers enough for the time that we put in to, to make this a great celebration, so, despite heat, despite the heat, it was a really fantastic event. The only other thing that we have coming up near term is going to be our back-to-school event with the pool, that'll be August the 5th, so that'll, we're taking a little bit of a step back, where the pool has a little more control of that, so we'll be supporting them in that event overall. And then, the final thing I'll mention is that as we get closer to the fall, as we've heard in just some random discussions, the Civic Club will be championing the Halloween event this year, or Fall Event, however we end up naming it, so that'll take place at the end of October, the general consensus is that we would do it at the park, that we would have the same entertainment company that does such a fantastic job with our lighting of the angels, our event last Saturday, as well as our Easter egg event, so we'll have, we'll have new things that are specific to the fall to go along with that, but I think October 28th is the date, it's the Saturday before, for one, to kind of give, you know, take off the night of Halloween, so that kids can actually still do trick-or-treating for the police officers that have so generously not celebrated Halloween with their own kids for years, it'll actually give them an opportunity to spend Halloween with their kids, so timing on it will be really good. The, the one big call I'll say is, we are planning on a hayride that will go through the community up around the park. ride that will go through the community up around the park, so it, it should be pretty cool, we've kind of timed it for a fifteen-minute event, so it should be something unique that, that's in this area, I don't know of any other hay rides that are like in the local vicinity, you gotta get out there a little bit, and that's about it, and, well, the other thing I'll say is, that should be a really cool event, we've had a lot of clamoring around, you know, not wanting the parade, and, and, and I happen to love the parade, but, but, you know, getting back to something that was, you know, Safe Streets or similar, so I'm hoping that the excitement of this event will intrigue some more people to participate in the civic club overall, you know, as we say every time, it doesn't, it doesn't require you to be there all the time, but, you know, we'll, we'll do some workup events to kind of get things ready, and like bagging candy, and those kind of things, so hopefully that'll kind of inspire some residents to participate in that, any questions?
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you. All right, city attorney updates?
Uh, none tonight.
None tonight. Council inquiry, Councilman Raymaker?
Yeah, on Sunday, in the park, I noticed that there was, there were two teams playing a soccer game, uniforms, referee, whistle, they had placed lines on the turf, they were using their nets, but goalie boxes outlining the field, players wearing cleats, so I'm a little concerned about the grass getting torn up, but my bigger concern was, there were thirteen to fifteen cars parked in the fire lane, so it's clearly marked, no parking fire lane, so, Danny Neighbors did come out, and he did talk to the folks about it, but I just want to keep an eye on it, because as people are using the park that way for sports, organized sports, then where do you draw the line? I drew the lines on the, on the field, somebody else comes in and uses them, you've got people arguing then about who's got rights to the field, so, I was wondering if it'd be something that we want to put on a future agenda, to talk about what we could do, or what we should do, or if we should do nothing at all, but I was kind of concerned, because now, if they have the same turnout, I mean, they have people sitting along the sidelines, and they're in their lawn chair, so clearly organized game watching their kids.
Yeah, I'm happy to put that on a future agenda.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm concerned that, okay, if they still continue to come out, and they can't park in the fire lane, then where are they gonna park? I don't know if they'll go to the pool parking lot, they might end up in the neighborhood, so, just to be a little proactive on that, before it mushrooms at all. That's it.
Councilman Fletcher?
I just want to say, uh, uh, thank you to, to staff and council, and everybody for your prayers and thoughts for our family this last couple of weeks, I greatly appreciate it.
Councilman Bratt?
As you know, I go through the budget, line by line, every month, and look for little things here and there, and sometimes it's nitpicky, and, um, sometimes it's not. I did, though, run into something, so, some things, because of time, I'm only gonna mention one, uh, tonight, uh, under the Department Administration, may report on pages five and six, it's open records, uh, report, and I noticed that we have one page, and then three lines on another page, and so it looks like we've got eighteen total open records requests, and, um, from what I remember, when I got on the council a year ago, we had over twenty requests from just one individual, and we had multiple requests from a few of other people there, uh, total, we had several pages of open records requests, and that's great, if we need them, my question, though, is that I, anecdotally, I was told, when I joined the council, I've heard it many times, that we hired a one person, a full-time person, to handle open records requests in two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen, when all the open records requests started happening, since we're down to just one page and change, now, from where we were when I was here a year ago, and I understand it had been that way for, for years, are we, my question is to you, is this something you think that we will be able to combine this position we had, we, we hired, uh, several years ago, can we combine that with another position, like we had it before we hired this person, and eliminate an FTE, and if not, just eliminate the FTE, which would open up, what, what does one person total cost of, thirty thousand dollars or so? Total?
Total with salary, and insurance, and benefits, and everything, you're usually getting close to a hundred thousand.
Okay, so a hundred thousand, so.
Give or take.
I propose if we could combine that position with another position, and save over a hundred thousand dollars, we could plow that into something that could really pay off for the city, perhaps, and increased compensation for our employees, so we can ensure that our turnover is, is at a minimal level, so, I just looked at this one month, this has never stood out to me before, and I went back in my records, I did not keep them, I don't know if this has been a declining trend, or this is just a one-month fluke or not, but if it's not a fluke, I propose that we investigate it, and look at how we can not terminate any, any position, a person, but perhaps maybe move people around and save that position, so that's really to you, Joseph, and, and your staff.
Absolutely, appreciate the input, we'll, we'll definitely look in the person that matters.
Thank you. The other thing, only one other thing, the event that we had this week has come up three or four times, the Independence Day event really was good, we had a lot of people that put a lot of blood and sweat and tears into that thing, it was a hard, it was hard work for everybody that did it, and I applaud, applaud the civic club for that, but also, at the same time, saw that there were several people commenting on the event, and some of them had some really good ideas that we may consider for the next year, I would like to encourage everybody in the city to please join the civic club, let your ideas be known, so that if you've got a better idea to do one of these events, or most, multiple events, they can be considered, because nobody's, certainly nobody has the answers for everything, and, uh, I know the civic club is open, so please, put the word out, try to get more people into civic club, there's, it's needed.
Is it? Councilman Bratt?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman McLeod?
Yeah, I just want to brag on our, on our kids a little bit, Shenandoah Sharks, they just finished up their fiftieth season, as people are aware, and unfortunately, that was the, the, the kids who would have typically attended the, the, the event there, many of them were over at the Nautatorium competing, and so, um, at the Trinity Swim Meet, and so your Sharks finished second in that swim meet, um, at the, in their, their team event, many of our kids swam at their best times ever, so CISD Nautatorium is a amazing place to swim, of course, and, um, all that comes from the community coming together and, and helping these, these kids out, and, uh, being there for, for our kids there, so again, they just finished their fiftieth, fifty years, the Shenandoah Sharks, and, um, the city's gonna be fifty next year, so, um, they've been, they've been partners for a long time, and so I just want, I would think that the Sharks are something that this community should be very proud of.
Didn't they win the event?
They, they, they came in second, came in second, there was another team there that's basically twice our size, that.
No. That it?
That's it, and I guess, thank you for the, the event, Debbie, and the rest of the team, and.
Yes, thank you.
And Charlie, I know y'all put a lot of work into it, and I was able to get out there for a few minutes that day, and, um, see all that, and, and it was, it was a really nice event, so.
All right, city administrator?
Uh, just a few updates, first off, trash service will be running normally next week, even with the holidays, so get your trash out like you normally would, they are running on their normal schedule, also, the asbestos cement pipe replacement project along David Vetter is complete, and, the, the company moved very quickly and efficiently, and it was a very smooth project, it was nice to have one run smooth, it happens every now and then, and I can say that now that it's done, I'm not gonna jinx anything.
No underground surprises.
And then, last off, kind of a fun update, you know, or maybe not fun, but a, a more cheerful update, that started out not so good, so my guys let me know one morning that they were going to check the park, pick up the trash, get things cleaned up, and they let me know one of the toilets had been vandalized, its porcelain was smashed, but they said it was really weird, because all the debris was cleaned up, which isn't normal for vandalism, well, later that day, we get a call from, from a father who said, my children are playing at the park, and they were roughhousing in the bathroom, broke the toilet, we'd like to replace it, um, you have a beautiful park, and I just wanted to read really quickly, because then, two days later, we got a letter, um, from Joey, and I'm glad I still have kids this age, because I can read it, but he says, "Dear City of Shenandoah, I am sorry for breaking the toilet, your park is beautiful," Joey, um, so they will be taking care of the repair of that toilet, that, that's all the updates I have.
Thanks, Joseph.
That's good parenting right there.
Exceptional parenting.
Yes. All right, we're gonna, we're going to, uh, suspend the, uh, council meeting and move on to executive session at, uh, eight oh eight. According to Texas Open Meetings Act, chapter five-five-one, the Texas Government Code is follows, uh, section five-five-one dash zero-eight-seven, deliberation regarding economic development, future economic development, city facilities, section five-five-one zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney, uh, regarding enforcement of IDC restrictions, and, chapter five-five-one point zero-four-five, and five-five-one point zero-seven-four, personnel. All right, we're gonna continue our Shenandoah City Council, we have completed our executive session, no action was taken, uh, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Joseph Peart as interim city administrator, pending Kathy Ryer's return from medical leave.
Second.
We have a motion to appoint Joseph Peart as interim city administrator, uh, made by Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman McLeod, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for stepping up, Joseph.
Motion carries. All right, the, uh, we're gonna adjourn this meeting of the Shenandoah City Council for June twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three, at nine fifteen.